All right, so I want to call the meeting back to order here. I want to thank everybody for coming to the school committee meeting. Apologize for being a little bit late. We had an executive session and now we're just getting set up for the main meeting to move forward. So as in the past, we're on Zoom here, so people can join that way. It's also being live streamed on Watertown Cable and Comcast Channel Eight, Comcast and Channel 15 RCN online. And then there is also a text. If someone has a message they want to convey, they can do a text number to 857-330-2278. And there's somebody there that will forward that message to us. And if you want to make a comment, we will have a public forum coming up very shortly. The time, the way to do that would be to raise your electronic hand when we come to that point. So first item on the agenda coming back from executive session is the high school student advisors. We want to welcome them. This is their first time here. We had a meeting in September, but they hadn't started yet. So this is their first time and excited to have them here to hear kind of what's happening at the high school from what they see. We have David Manukian and Shabnam Begum.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So both of these eager volunteers were captured by me in the last day or so. And so while they may not have a formal update, and I believe actually David was just kicked out of the meeting, we are eager to have them. And I know we have Shabnam is here at least. And Shabnam, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, just, you know, your name and grade and a little bit of what you do at the high school. I have a little bio here written for you, but I'd better hear it from you.
Yes, good evening. Hi, my name is Shabnam Begum. I am currently a senior at Watertown High School. And I am glad to be here tonight and be a representative for the school committee. I am a responsible student and as well as a leader who motivate my teammates by building trust and confidence in them. I want them to take a positive approach when doing anything presently or anything that they do in the future. At the Watertown High School, I was involved in various leadership activities. The first one was the Sahili Club. And this was basically an organization where we worked with a group of members and we explored what we wanted to do in the future. And we took a look and explored lots of colleges and future opportunities that hold in the future for us post-high school. I was also involved in the Harvard Peer Leadership Class. And this inspired me to become a peer leader for advisory. And I want the job done to be at its best and help build trust in my teammates. And with my advisory teacher, we meet each week and usually it's a day before advisory to help prep for the class and what we are going to be doing as the lesson goes on. And usually I provide recommendations for some activities that we could tackle and want to help our freshman students feel welcomed at the high school and see what the experience are ahead of them. I also have another friend of mine that is working with me together. And we collaborated together to become peer leaders and represent our Watertown High School. Because we've been here for the past four years now. And we know what it's like to be a student here because we were also once a freshman. So we want them to feel welcomed and have a warm welcome at the high school.
Thank you, Shabnam.
Shabnam, thank you so much.
You may come back with a question. Is David there or not?
Not yet.
He's actually not. He's reporting some tech challenges over email. But he is, you know, I can, anecdotally, I can say that he is also a member of our Peer Leaders Program. And he is really risen to a level of leadership in that program that is of note from the administrators in the building, just taking so many students under his wing. He also said he's the captain of the football and the wrestling team. He's the senior class treasurer. He's a member of the National Honor Society. And in his free time, which doesn't sound like there's much, he loves to work out. And so he's sad he couldn't make it to speak on his own behalf, but he's eager to be here. And I couldn't have, I couldn't be more excited to have these two represent our school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Shabnam, just a question, are you still there?
Yeah.
Can you just say a little bit about kind of how the remote learning has been going for you?
Remote learning so far, it's been going okay. But in the beginning, it was very hard to get used to it. As time went on, things became a little more better. And I started to get used to the new schedules and finding the Zoom links for each class and being on time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from school committee members, comments? Okay. Well, Shabnam, thank you very much for your willingness to do this during this academic. We appreciate that. It's good to hear a student voice at the beginning of our meeting. So we thank you very much for providing that. And you and David can kind of, you know, talk a little bit beforehand, kind of coordinate and pass along. In the past, the high school advisors, sometimes they'll kind of split up responsibilities among themselves in terms of what they report on. It's really up to you kind of how you do that. And there may be times when maybe I'll connect with you a little bit as well and prompt you for an issue that we're particularly interested in. And you can provide the perspective from the student perspective from the high school. So again, thank you very much for your willingness to do this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move to the public forum. So we may have, I assume we'll have some people that are willing, that are interested in speaking. I see a few hands already. Just a basic rule here is to keep your comments, if you will, within three minutes or less. And I'll try to keep track of that. This is the opportunity to speak in general about any school issue that you are concerned about, but also about any of the agenda items that are on our agenda. This would be the time to speak about that. We do also have a public forum at the end of the meeting. So if you stay that long, you're welcome to speak at that point related to, again, any items that we may have talked about. So let's see.
Jesse Neeland is the first one with the hand up. You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello.
Yes, go ahead, Jesse.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for taking my comment. I am a mom of first and fourth graders at the Lowell School. And I thank you for all your hard work and consideration of community feedback as you've been preparing this plan of return to hybrid. And I just wanted to urge you to consider moving more quickly and more responsively to in-person schooling. I would say that virtual school has really been kind of a disaster for my first grader. It's very hard for him to navigate all of the links. And honestly, we've moved in with my in-laws temporarily so that we can have the extra parental support. So with two parents working and two kids in virtual school, it's really a struggle for our family. So I know that the plan was made to have some built-in checkpoints. I think if there's anything you can do to accelerate some of those checkpoints about considering some increased in-person school, I think that would be really beneficial, especially at the elementary level. We've seen schools around the state and around the country going back to increased in-person learning times and doing so safely. And I feel like Watertown has worked so hard to make sure that our infrastructure is ready for that, to make sure that our students are ready for that. And I think, I think that we could go back a little bit sooner if possible or move some of those checkpoints further, further ahead in time to be more responsive to the, honestly, pretty good metrics. According to the CDC guidelines, we really should be at the lowest category of risk right now. So while the weather is still good and we can open the windows and get the kids outside more, I really think that it's a shame to not have them enjoying some time in person and really getting that face time with their teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Again, you know, in general, we don't comment, the school committee doesn't comment during the public forum. I will say though, the first agenda item after this will be an update on the school reopening from the superintendent. And there'll be some, likely be some school committee discussion at that point about kind of where things are at. So, but thank you, Jesse. Owen Murphy.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Porz. As you know, I drafted a petition relating to the school opening. I guess as we discussed yesterday, I'll read it right now. I sent it into you, signed by 165 parents. Since that time, a couple of more names have trickled in. If you'd like me to send those along, I'd be happy to do so. I think the people who signed it would like, would like to have their names on the record. It's a petition to assess the safety of opening Watertown Public Schools. To the Watertown School Committee and Superintendent, we, the below sign Watertown parents respectfully and urgently ask that you begin the process of assessing the safety of letting our students into their schools. Please vote to set aside the check-in dates that were selected months ago and initiate a process where the safety of opening or closing hybrid schools is assessed on an ongoing basis. We were told that our school opening plan would be data-driven. And the data, as defined by the district and the state, has told us that our community is safe for hybrid for at least eight weeks. It's actually almost nine weeks now. Yet the plan remains static and schools closed. If our plan is not allowed flexibility, if we must wait four more weeks through K through five until October 27th and nine more weeks for grades six to 12 until November 30th to even possibly open our schools, it will be a tragic loss opportunity for the education, socialization, and well-being of our students. Allow our plan to do its job and serve us best by absorbing new information. A wide variety of youth sports are being played all over town every day. Some run by the town and some by private organizations. Stores are open, restaurants are open, Watertown Public Library is open, dance classes are open, private schools are open, many of them for weeks and full days. Public schools in nearly all other communities at comparable levels of COVID-19 are open or opening in the very near future. Paid preschool in a Watertown school building and run by Watertown Public Schools is open. The closed Watertown Public Schools are increasingly an outlier compared to other public schools and even within our own community. Belmont recently accelerated their opening plans to be in line with other communities that have low COVID-19 rates and Watertown should too. With masks, distancing, ventilation, and hand washing, it is safe to do so. If we proceed with the plan as currently executed, this could result, as currently being executed, this could result in at least two to three less months of in-person school for Watertown children compared to other communities with low COVID rates. Even by the necessarily lower standards of these times, this is not the adequate education our children are entitled to and deserve. We've got five mostly empty schools available, 300 new high-quality air purifiers that surpass all recommendations from our HVAC safety analysis, and 2,000-plus students sitting at home who will be better off with more access to their highly skilled professional teachers and peers. We must not squander the good weather and low COVID rates we have now. Again, please begin assessing the safety of opening schools immediately. And if the conditions remain safe, begin the process of allowing those students whose families want them to return to school. Thank you for your consideration and attention. This petition's been around just for like four days and 165, actually 167 people now have signed it. I would also like to say that it was intentionally crafted to be very narrow. We are not asking that you throw the school doors open and wave everybody in. All we're asking is that you assess the safety of school without delay. And if it's safe, let our students in. I believe the petition is actually in support of the plan and the wishes of the community. The plan acknowledges that students are best served by being in school. A very perceptive person pointed out to me yesterday that the plan says right in the executive summary that the check-in dates are tentative. When I checked, it actually says this twice. The plan also says multiple times that we will monitor the COVID data. Why monitor the data if we can't adjust and be flexible with the plan based on what we're seeing? If those check-in dates somewhere along the line got set in stone and completely locked in, that was not part of the public process. And pushing the data aside that is coming in, as well as the 82% of Watertown families who, when asked if they wanted hybrid or remote, said they wanted hybrid. To not adjust the tentative dates of new information, to not be allowed to react to the information that is being monitored is against the principles of the plan and against what the community overwhelmingly said they wanted. So I would just ask you again to please, please, please vote tonight to start assessing the safety of school right away and open if it's safe. If for some reason you can't vote tonight, please don't wait till the regular meeting two weeks from now to address this situation. This is an emergency situation, is an urgent situation. Our schools will be, our kids will be out of school for seven months by the time the next school committee meeting that is regularly scheduled will take place. If you need to have another meeting about this, open meeting law says you just have to post notice 48 hours in advance. You can post notice tonight and have a meeting late Wednesday. You can post notice tomorrow and have a meeting on Thursday. So that's basically what I wanted to say about the petition. I did have some comments I wanted to make about my own students, my own children, but I'd be happy to get back to the back of the line. There's a lot of people in line or...
I gave you a little extra time there because you do, presenting a petition's a little bit different. But yeah, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Let me, if I can, move on. Nicole Lamachia.
I'm sorry, I'm doing that right now. There we go.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have four children in the Watertown school system, all in three different schools. And I feel strongly about Owen and everyone else, how the school should be open now. But my question is, my little one is in the pre-K program. I'm just curious as to why the preschool gets to be in-person, but the pre-K has to be virtual. It's very hard to keep my four-year-old focused for the four hours that were there. So I was just wondering what your answer was to that.
Do you want to speak to that specific question, Dr. Wilson?
So the preschool is, the preschool program is our high needs program. And we're going to, we're going to talk about that when we get into the presentation. But quite technically, the preschool program is a substantially separate program that is required by law. And that's why we brought in our preschool students along with several other of our substantially separate programs, pretty much right from the beginning, because that was what was recommended from the state. Pre-K is not a substantially separate program. It's a tuition-based program. And so we consider that to be similar to the rest of our students that are in remote right now and with the goal of moving into a more in-person model once we're ready to do so.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Nicole. Carol Blackwood.
Hi, it's Carol Blackwood. I'm a kindergarten teacher at the Hossma School. And first, I want to thank the school committee and everybody here for this plan that's in place right now. We are in green because of the thoughtful process that we've been through. Boston is in red right now. Waltham is in yellow. We're right in the middle. I also want to thank the town for their rollout. Because of that, we're in green. And that's the goal, is to stay in green. I also want to thank the parents who signed the petition because that opens up the conversation. There are so many more factors that go into this besides the grin and whether we're green or not. There is nothing more than my peers and myself want than the kids to be in school. We are in unusual circumstances. School is not going to be what it was before COVID. We are going to have students six feet apart. They are not going to be sharing toys, manipulatives, books. So it's going to be very different for them. During this time, we're able to build community. They can see us. We're working out technical difficulties. By beefing up this remote model is to hopefully keep us in through the winter. We can have this model rolled out. We can be in in three weeks if we stay green. And then if someone, say in my class, gets COVID, it can be a smooth transition to them be put in just my class for two weeks while we quarantine and then transition back. The hope is that the state doesn't come in and mandate that we close down, which is what happened unexpectedly last March. This is a well-thought-out plan. We have three weeks before we're back in and we're trying to prepare and get things ready for the school. Yes, there's purifiers. The superintendent and the school committee and school department and the town have really focused on making things as safe as possible. Even without our learning, we have to rotate through and be six feet apart. I just want to read real quick, and I know it's three minutes. I received a letter from a kindergarten parent after the first week. And she said that she was so unsure what to expect and how this was going to work. And she was so excited and happy to see how engaging it was and how independent her daughter has become with all the features of Zoom. She compared it to be in the quarterback of a team, keeping the energy and the positivity going. I know this does not work for all families. My heart is aching for the families out there that this is a struggle for. I completely understand. I wish this was over. You know, so I just want you to please, I can only speak to the elementary level because that's where it impacts, where my experience is. Let's go with the plan. I would have kids in six times in the next three weeks. Two days each, two half-days each. So, but I can have this room ready to go in three weeks if I'm allowed the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next would be Adrena Goby. Just identify yourself at the very beginning, please.
Got it. Oh, she's, I have to promote her to a panelist because she's in an older, I got it. I'm, here she is. Adrena, if you could unmute, that would be...
I think we're good, right?
Yes.
So I own the business in Watertown for fourteen and a half years. I have thirty-five children enrolled right now. And obviously, we are following easy regulations for, you know, COVID safety. And I just feel as if I have a child in third grade at the grade of nine point seven at the middle. And I feel as if the kids really need to get back to school. I feel like the classrooms, you know, if we can put it at a level which is for the younger children. I have age five and under. I feel like older children definitely do it. It's for masks and so, distancing. And I really feel like it's detrimental to not have them in school at this point. The focus for Zoom is not, it's just not feasible, I guess, for children. I mean, the focus is there for a little bit, but it's definitely not there for the whole four hours or whatever is expected. I feel like goals are kind of unrealistic at this point without being in school at least part-time. There's no reason, given the numbers in Watertown itself, for children not to be back in school in some capacity. Parents are working and, you know, it's really hard to have children on Zoom all day, have a full-time job, a full-time job, you know.
I think we're losing the connection. I think we're losing the connection here. It's very hard to understand you at this point. But I think we got the gist of your position. As a, I think as a Lowell parent, I think we understand the point you were trying to raise. I think you have a kind of a rough connection. But thank you very much. Heather McManus.
Hi, so I'm a parent at the Lowell, a kindergartner. I just wanted to chime in from sort of the science side of things. I appreciate that parents want their children back in school. And I also appreciate that they're working off of sort of what their, you know, Desi has been putting out there. But I think it's really important to contextualize the fact that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health has been critical of Desi's process for reopening and has felt that some of it has been incomplete. And the extent that they have involved the Massachusetts State Department of Public Health and other public...
Same question, answers, and they're just...
What?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. The degree to which they've utilized public health organizations in Massachusetts has really sort of been overstated. And the color-coded map, there is still a lot of debate among the public health and epidemiologically community as to whether or not that is the most appropriate metric. And I really don't know any sort of public health person or infectious disease specialist who would say that we should treat every green community on the map identically without looking at other factors such as density and location and all of those factors together. So I'm not sure that, like, if we do a re, like a robust reassessment with a complete public health lens for reopening, I don't think it's going to change the timeline for reopening in the way that parents who are signing the petition are suggesting. Especially since our numbers are going up in the state. Suffolk County is going into a more moderate risk level. So I think we really should ask ourselves, what is the best use of the district's time right now? And I, yeah, so basically, I don't think assessing the data can be done on a single metric point. And I don't think that the data currently in Massachusetts supports reopening or that Watertown is a low-risk community, so.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Matt Rose.
I'm getting there, hold on. Got it.
Thank you, John. First, I do want to thank everybody for their well-thought-out plan. I'll also try and keep this fast because you all know I tend to be long-winded. I do really appreciate all of the data-driven decisions that you're making. And I definitely don't envy the position of any of you when trying to make these decisions. I completely agree with what Owen was suggesting with data-driven decisions. And I completely agree with what Heather was saying with data-driven decisions. And as she stated, in Massachusetts, the numbers are going up. Seven-day moving averages from September 14th through now have gone up 59%. The moving average of 14th to 20th of September was at 387 positive cases per week. Now we're at 615 positive cases per week. And we're still turning out a... And we're still turning out a positivity rate of people being tested of over three percent. So the numbers unfortunately are going up. And I mean, I can speak to challenges of remote learning. It's really hard. I'm working hard all of the time. Uh, I saw John on the way back to the high school after a run. I'm still at the high school now. Like, all we do, we are working, we're working, we're working, and nobody pretends that the best in, I'm sorry, the best model for education is in person. But it's it's a risk reward at this point of a hybrid opening, which whatever that may look like is not going to be real school, as Carol had pointed out. It's going to be a very different model. And the educational risk versus the educational reward of risking students and risking teachers and risking families ending up with COVID nineteen. The high school students I know use the MBTA that travel through, you know, red zones and yellow zones into what has been a low rate in Watertown. So there are a lot of moving factors, as Heather pointed out, and it's not just looking at one metric. It's looking at everything. It's looking at where Watertown is and where our community members, where our teachers, where our students travel to on a daily basis. That's that's it. And thank you for for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Matt. Next would be Beth McAndrew.
Am I muted?
I will mute you. Hold on one second. I can do that maybe.
Under three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, I have two kids at the Lowell, one in kindergarten and one in second grade. And I firstly want to say that I think that the plan that you guys have come up with has been phenomenal, especially in comparison to other districts that I've spoken to. However, I just don't see a substitute for in person learning. And at this point, at what point do we decide? We don't know what's going to happen with a vaccine. We don't know what's going to happen in the future at all at this point. If that's the one thing that we can say we've all learned. So how long are we willing to keep the kids out of school? I mean, our numbers could look this way for a long time. So are we looking at years that we're willing to keep kids out of the building? At what point do we decide that they have to be back in the building in some capacity? I mean, you just saw with the woman that spoke a few people earlier, technology is an issue. And it's very frustrating, especially for the younger kids. My daughter gets so upset when she can't connect to her Zoom or they can't hear her. And I'm I'm just wondering, at what point do we decide that the kids need to be back in school? Because I know for my kids, and I can't say enough about their teachers, they've been completely wonderful. As with everybody at the school, it's just that there's a reason that kids are supposed to be in the building. So I just don't understand. I'd like some information of, is there a point that we decide that we have to go back because it could be years?
Okay, thanks, Beth. I mean, as I said before, we're going to have an update shortly on the school reopening. I'd be an opportunity to have a little bit more discussion and kind of how the pieces fit together. But thank you. Laura, Laura D.
Hi, yes, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. My name is Laura DeSisto. I have a child in second grade at the Lowell School as well as a student that is in a private pre K and middle and high school student in a different district. My pre K student is going to school full time and the middle and high school students are both in hybrid plans in another town. From my perspective, I see firsthand the benefits of being back in school even part time for the older students. The kids, since they've been back the fall and since the fall, you know, their happiness, their mental health have really improved. And, you know, we hear stories about how some kids are excelling. But really, what about the kids who aren't excelling? And those parents have harder time speaking up frequently. It's hard to to admit when our child is having a hard time, especially on a public forum. Let's not leave any kid behind. Extended Zoom calls are well intentioned, but they're far too long for young kids to focus and learn. We should be utilizing the good weather while we can. I see the tents outside and I never see anyone in them. For the young kids, it's just far too reliant on parents and it amplifies inequities. Ultimately, I really believe that we need to bring in kids while we can and that there's no substitution for in person learning. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Next, Jill Tyco.
Hi, again, I'd like to thank everyone for their thoughtful decisions and thinking about all this. I am a high school math teacher and I agree with what Carol has said. Going back into a hybrid model is not going to be anything like the dream I think a lot of people have for it. I have seen more collaborative work from my high school students in breakout rooms that would be absolutely impossible to have six feet apart in my classroom. I am utilizing the Zoom breakout rooms on a very regular basis. I see the students working on activities together. And I am seeing them help each other out more than I ever have when I've been in class and more than I can envision ever happening in a hybrid model, especially if I only have eight out of the twenty at any given time. Additionally, we're just getting started on how to work things on those days we're not seeing them. And, you know, my students are, I've done a lot of flip classrooms and the students are really, you know, they're enjoying the videos. They can go at their own pace. They can actually time things out and they can ask questions when they need to. So from a high school standpoint, don't get me wrong, I want to be in the room too. I am checking homework more for quality and accuracy. I am noticing a significant amount of answers being generated from online apps. Basically, I'm seeing a lot more copying and not independent work based on things that I've done. So trust me, I want to be back in the classroom. However, I'm not a hundred percent sure how well that experience is going to be. In a hybrid model at the high school, I will see each class, half of them, once a week. So instead of seeing my students where they are not going to see me in a mask, they're going to see my expression, they're going to see me joke, I'm going to see them joke. They're going to be staring at me through a mask six feet apart like the movie Gattaca. Don't turn around, don't look and don't speak to anyone. Versus now where I'm having them all in breakout rooms, they are talking to each other. They actually like the freedom of talking to each other. I walked in a few where conversations are still very math oriented, just not language appropriate, which is fine because they're enjoying themselves and they're getting the work done. So I appreciate your time, but I think we're just getting start at the, maybe it things are different at the elementary level. But I think at the high school level, I think what we're doing is really it's beginning to work. We just have to give it time because the world is going to change when it gets cold. So I appreciate your time, but it's not the greatest solution, but I think we're working at on making it the best solution.
All right, thank you, Jill. James Buck, Jim Buck.
Okay, I'm getting there. Maybe to me this bigger. Sorry. Just had to make it bigger.
Here I am, obviously not a Zoom expert. I just unmuted myself. Yeah, so thanks for calling on me. Just at the start, I'd like to to say that when we, the faculty voted first time around back in August, I think I was one of the minority of people who voted in favor of coming back in in a hybrid fashion, mainly based on my experiences last spring. And I still feel that way now that this is less than desirable. I I feel awful meeting all these new students virtually. And I feel like I don't really know any of them yet. I don't know if if they know me the way that I would like them to. So I I don't think I don't love anything about this situation as it is. However, there's always a however. And I'm just speaking for myself personally, and I'm sure and I know I'm not alone. I mean, I'm in kind of a high risk age cohort. You know, where there's maybe a ten or fifteen percent mortality rate for people who contract the virus. As a result of that, I'm very careful about what I do. I socialize with other people who I know are very careful. And I'm just concerned based on what I see in my own community that there's a lot of high school age kids who are not very careful. And I'm I'm quite frankly, I'm afraid of putting my, you know, putting my life in in their hands and the risk of contracting something from people who don't follow the same precautions that that I do and most of us do. Besides that, there seems to be an upward trend. A lot of people are forecasting, you know, maybe a second surge as we move into the colder weather. I personally would be much more comfortable if we, you know, just dug in, did the best we could and 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 wait to see what happens in the next month or two and hope that situ, that hope that the situation improves. And then we can, I would, nothing I would like more than to come back and knowing that everybody's going to be safe. But I don't feel that way now. So I just ask you to take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Rachel Kay.
Hello.
Rachel.
Hi, I just wanted to to add a little to the discussion about how things are different in the classroom. My son is in second grade at the Lowell and he is one of the few who is back in person. And it is different. They have to follow rules. They have to wear masks. And I just asked the kiddo, what's, you know, is it hard for people? And he says, well, there are a lot of reminders. So that is true. That said, they adjust. They are they are learning. Their teachers are making this is just the new rules and this is how it has to be. And that could happen at any classroom. You know, with a teacher who sets it up well, which I'm sure if the teachers can deal with Zoom, they can deal with setting up rules in a classroom. I can't speak for the high school level because I know less about that. But certainly the little ones probably will adjust faster than the teachers. And it's also, you know, my son has special needs, which is why he gets the privilege of going back. But I can only imagine for the parents who have just this much fewer needs and can't do it at home because for us, the spring was a disaster. And had we had to do this at home again, I probably would have just pulled him out of school entirely because I can't work full time and get him on the computer all day. Those are two full time jobs and as a single working mother, it's not possible. And as that someone else mentioned, this is happening at all sorts of families of all sorts of combinations, depending on the kid, depending on the parents. Not everyone can help their kids all the time and some kids need it. And we're just increasing inequities. So thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Rachel Danforth.
Hi, can you hear me? Great. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a parent in the Lowell District and I just wanted to say that I hope that we do continue with the current plan because I want the educators and the administrators to spend their time and effort on educating our students and not on constant reassessing. It doesn't look like things will be quote unquote normal anytime soon. And if we go hybrid, it won't be for long. It won't be consistent. I think it's going to be really hard for students to go back and forth from remote to hybrid to quarantine, back to hybrid. So I agree with an earlier commenter that mentioned that we need to give it time to make, you know, that people will settle in and we need to give it time to make remote the best that it can be. So as a parent, I really hope that we can give our educators the time and support they need to and that we can stick with the current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Someone else I got.
Jennifer McHugh.
Pardon?
Jennifer McHugh.
Jennifer McHugh.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me? Hi, yes. So I have two children, sixth and ninth grade. So it was kind of sad they had to start brand new schools without actually going to the buildings. But, you know, my concern is that what someone said earlier, when do we decide, you know, that they go back, like when, you know? It's just with at that age, at their ages, my concern is, you know, come winter. Or someone said the numbers are going up. So will we even go back hybrid come, you know, November? And if not, then it will be what, February or so? So that'll be almost a year with the kids out of school. And at my kids' ages where they're going through puberty and, you know, they, some kids can get depressed. I think that's something to think about, not being around their peers. And then come, you know, winter, when they can't be outside with their friends a lot. And if they're not in school, I think that's kind of a, you know, I think that's kind of, you know, it's very concerning for me. Like, they're not in school, they're not, they can't be outside with friends. So at those ages, I can't speak for little ones because mine are older. But for at my kids' ages, I just think it's, you know, mental health is something to really think about. And I feel like it was kind of a missed opportunity to to start off hybrid and then reassess like come November. Because I just don't see, like someone said, come, you know, the numbers are going up. I just don't see them going back probably till next year, right? So I, yeah, so my, so my thing is just, you know, with the older kids, it's, I know with little ones, they're saying it's hard with the online. But with the older ones, to think about is just like their mental health and just, you know, it's an important thing to, I know it'll be different being in school, but it's important to for them to be around their peers, you know? So thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. So thank you, everybody, for their comments and for their input on the public forum. It's a very important part of a school committee meeting. So, you know, we appreciate those comments. Again, I said, there is a public forum at the very end as well. But I'm going to close the public forum at this point and go to the next agenda item, which is the teaching and learning showcase. And it's an update on the school reopening with a focus certainly around the remote instruction and then also the in person instruction for specialized programs. So I'll turn it over first to Dr. Bostin.
Excellent. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the people who participated in the public forum. Certainly, the reason for having a public forum is to hear people's voices and to help us to, you know, form opinions and make decisions. So very much appreciated people taking the time to do that. Give me one second and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So tonight, we wanted to just give the committee and the the community just an overview of where we're at with school reopening. I have invited actually the Assistant Superintendent Dr. McGinnis, as well as Student Services Director, Ms. Damaris, to provide some detailed information around what it is that that we're doing and what we're thinking moving forward. I just do want to give everybody a, not just the people who presented or were in public forum, but just a big thank you to everybody for the opening of school. I think we did a really good job. And obviously, there are many things to consider as we move along. But I have great appreciation for everybody in this community, the teachers, the instructional assistants, the parents, the students, everybody for moving forward in this very difficult time. I think we've identified the fact that, and I've said it all along, we are in the midst of a pandemic. It is, you know, a health crisis that has an educational impact. And we're certainly trying to work through how best to deal with that educational impact in an unprecedented time that we haven't really seen in a hundred years. So we're trying really hard to do what's best. And so I'm going to go through and just provide you a little bit of an overview. But certainly, we also have the principals here. If the school committee have questions about specifics that are happening within the buildings. So we're going to talk about the opening of school, a little about moving to hybrid, fall open houses. I wanted to highlight the employee childcare that we have in place. And then I'm going to hand it over to Kathy Damaris, who is going to talk about our specialized programs. Which we heard a little bit about already from one of our our parents. So as you know, we are right now in what is considered to be phase three of our bridge to return, September twenty second to October twenty second. Schools opened for instruction on September twenty second. We finalized those class lists. I know that that was something that, you know, was up to the very last minute. I just want to acknowledge the fact that our principals worked very diligently to accommodate many families' desires and needs when it came to cohorts. And that's part of the reason why it took a little bit longer than we anticipated to get those class lists. And that's part of the reason why it took a little bit longer than we anticipated to get those class lists together. But I think in the end, we certainly met the needs of many of our families as we moved into our cohort method. We had a very successful material distribution in September 17th, 18th, and 21st. It was fabulous to see families and students coming through and to see our teachers really supporting our kids with boxes and materials so that they could be actively participating while they were in the remote model. We all know that we had a few little bumps in our Zoom security, so we have certainly beefed up our Zoom security, adding some extra layers for better security. You know, I think it was mentioned in the public forum that, you know, this is, yes, still new, still something we're learning. We thought we had pretty much layered as much as we could with Zoom, but we found out that there was another layer that we needed to do, which we've done a couple of bumps getting all the kids back in. But I think now, you know, we buttoned it up very well, to the point where I accidentally inadvertently kicked out to be high school advisor. So, there you go. Students started instruction on the 22nd and we begin our third week today on the Bridge to Hybrid for most of our students. So very excited to be in that process and moving forward. Attendance is high and our routines are setting up nicely. I will share a slide a little bit later about our attendance rates, which are exceedingly high at this point in time. I understand fully that the first couple of weeks of anything new are challenging for families and students. But at least we still have a very high number of our kids across the board that are attending our Zoom lessons and participating well. So blended learning is an excellent strategy. There's one thing that we learned in this process is that there are many ways to reach students. And we are really perfecting our art on doing so in a distance learning model. But I'm sure that it is something that we'll be using forever. I liked what Ms. Seichel had to say about really finding new ways to engage her students in small groups that maybe we never would have done before. So we always have to look on the bright side. So we're learning these new strategies and workflows while leveraging what they have learned in the spring to make adaptive teaching practices sustainable. Just as a matter of a figure, we do have 18% of our students that have chosen fully virtual remote learning up through February. So some people had wondered how many families actually have selected that and that is the option, that we have 18% in that option. So in terms of reassessing, I mean, obviously, we heard from the public forum, there are some questions around, you know, what are we doing now that we've been in for two weeks? You know, are we thinking about our plan? Are we thinking about ways to make it better? Certainly, I can tell you that the Administrative Council, which are our principals and our central office team, along with the various school-based instructional leadership teams, are currently assessing the daily schedules and may make adjustments to practice as warranted. You might see changes to the schedules as soon as next week, depending upon what it is that the instructional leadership teams think is in the best interest of our schedule. But that is something that, you know, we've identified. We knew in August, we put this plan together, that maybe there might be some things that we had to think about right out of the gate to see if it was working or not. And that's what our Administrative Council is doing. So as I just said, that we may see some shifts in our schedules to further enhance student learning and to ensure an appropriate and commensurate education based on our local expertise and the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. So we'll continue to monitor attendance and conduct outreach for any families that may be struggling to access remote learning. And that was brought up today in the community forum, the public forum, about our air purifiers. So that is something we certainly assessed all of our buildings. We determined that, for the most part, our ventilation systems are actually pretty dysfunctional. But we decided to take the extra step and order air purifiers for all of our rooms. Right now, we have all of our air purifiers for our high-need students, the kids that are in school right now. They are backordered for some of our remaining classrooms, but we anticipate that they will be delivered by the end of October. So that's just an update on that. So this is a snapshot of our daily attendance during the Bridge to Return. So the first week that we're back in school, you can see that we were well above 95% in all of our buildings. We are holding steady in our second week. Our middle school dipped just a little bit, but we are, that was last week. But we are certainly doing a lot of outreach and you can see we're above 95% in all of our other schools. So. So again, back to reassessing the Bridge to Return plan. On August the 6th, we all know that the school committee voted a plan to gradually move towards a hybrid model based on the thinking and the data available at that time, with the intention to return full in-person when possible. If you recall, we were not given the metrics from the state until after we took that vote, the school committee took that vote. I mean, at that time and still even today, which was mentioned as well in the community forum. You know, we didn't know what the fall was going to look like and we are very fortunate in Watertown that, yes, we have been able to maintain our low numbers of people with COVID. But that is something that, you know, hopefully will continue into the future. But when we voted this plan, there was certainly a lot of forecasting around what the fall was going to look like. So I think with, in concurrence with our Board of Health, this was a very judicious and safe plan, moving forward to take our time and make sure that we had everything in place to be as safe as we could to open our schools during a pandemic. In the plan, the district reserved the right to make changes to any and all aspects of the WPS Bridge to Return, which was also brought up. And we, as we considered community feedback, additional guidance from the state, and continued to monitor COVID-19 trends. So yes, absolutely, in the plan, it was always intended to be looking at it in terms of what's working and what's not, and is there anything that we need to adjust? And trust me, this is now October the 5th. Come December, I'm sure we'll be having conversations about what we need to adjust then. Come January, come February, March, April, May, we will constantly, constantly be reassessing and trying to figure out what's best for our students. And yes, the Bridge to Return plan has at its core the goal to return to in-person instruction in this model based on sound scientific metrics and the readiness of our buildings. And I should put as well the readiness of our Watertown Public Schools community to move into that hybrid model. So we continue to monitor the data. It's funny, I'm just repeating what was said in the public forum. But we continue to monitor the data and are very pleased that Watertown continues to be green, while other, other of our neighboring communities waver between the various colors, including red and yellow. So we are certainly doing well, but we are surrounded by communities that go back and forth. And that's something to be considering as well as we move forward. One thing that I'm very proud of is that we have COVID-19 surveillance testing in place for our staff. Our high-need staff started the surveillance testing on October the 1st. So once again, this is just another layer that we've put in so that when we are ready to move into hybrid, we have that awesome confidence that we are providing our teachers with up-to-date 12-hour turnaround, in essence, of PCR testing. So very proud of that as well. And then, any recommendations for school committee consideration for changing the phasing in of the levels? Would not be made until October the 19th. I know there was a lot of call to try to do that earlier. I personally believe, and speaking for my administrative team as well, that we are settling into week two. We're done with week two, we're into week three. We feel that that, the next three weeks will provide us everything that we need to do, provide our teachers with a definite direction and the time and the energy and the ability to make it the most meaningful transition into a hybrid that we possibly can. So launching the hybrid model, principals are reviewing the protocols and procedures at upcoming faculty meetings and with their instructional leadership teams. A few of the main topics that are being considered include entering and exiting the buildings, classroom procedures, recess and mask breaks, transportation and drop-offs, addressing symptomatic students and staff, and simulcasting for students and staff who are quarantined or participating remotely. And there are many other considerations as well, but it is something that we are right now focused on. A lot of people wondered, well, weren't you focused on that during our 10 days of planning? What we were focused on in our 10 days of planning was putting together our weekly learning plans, making sure that our pedagogy for teaching either in remote or in-person was solid and ready to go. And knowing that we had those five weeks to prepare for the transition to hybrid, that is what we put our focus on. And now we knew that we had this time to get ready for transitioning into hybrid. And as long as we continue in the way we are, then we will be ready to do so hopefully by October the 26th, which is the Monday which nobody's in. So really, October the 27th for the elementaries. One thing that came up a lot, you know, I know that, I know that the community is aware of the fact that we heard from one of our teachers about being in a higher-risk category. We have several teachers and staff members that, for whom this is not the safest environment for them to be in. It took us a little bit of, a little bit of time to work through that and figure out who was going to be back in person and who wasn't. One thing that we did know is that we had well over 35 or more staff members that, for them, it was going to be pretty much difficult or impossible to be teaching due to childcare issues. So we committed to the fact that in order to be able to have our teachers in every day when we move into hybrid, that we would start childcare for those staff members, which is something that we've been able to do. Please note, this is fee-based. It's not free. But it is something that I think really will make a difference for our staff members so that we have continuity of teaching when we move into the hybrid. Dr. McGinnis, do you want to speak a little about our open houses?
Excuse me. Sure. The principals and their instructional leadership teams met and planned virtual open houses for safety and to follow along with our remote plan that we have here. As you can see here, and it's communicated also weekly in the principal newsletters, the elementary is October 13th, the high school is October 15th, and then the middle school is October 22nd. And they've outlined it so that parents, if you have children in various levels or grade levels, you can make sure that you get the option to see their teachers by the way that they've designed it here. So we're hoping it will be as intimate as virtual can be and that we'll have all of our parents show up at those. So, that's it. And early steps also, forgive me, the very bottom there too.
So I'm going to hand it over to, unless the school committee wants to ask questions around the first part of our presentation, the next part is really around our specialized programming and the students that are in for high needs. It's up to you guys what you want to do.
Keep going, fine.
Okay, excellent. So I'm going to invite Kathy Damaris, who is our Director of Student Services, to, and I'm not, do we have Kate out there too, or is it just you, Kathy?
I haven't seen Kate. I can speak to her slides if she's not here. She, I don't know if she was maybe need a panelist. It's possible that she is.
No, she's not here tonight.
What's that?
Kate is not.
Okay, great. I can present her slides, no problem.
I figured that you could. Okay.
I'm most advancing the slides.
That would be me.
Excellent. Okay, thanks, DeeDee. Great. So, so we do have, from the state, in the summertime, we were asked to bring as many students with disabilities with, that have IEPs back for in-person services to the greatest extent feasible. And they asked us to really focus at first on our highest needs students, our students with very complex, you know, diagnoses and needs. And so we started with our substantially separate programs on September the 22nd. And just to give you an idea of the numbers for our connections program, so that's programming for students with autism and related developmental disabilities. We have, just put down the numbers of students and teachers and instructional assistants who are together in person back in their buildings for that program. And you can see we have programming at Early Steps, Cosmo, Middle School, and High School. All set? It's good. Another specialized program that we have is the Learning Support Program. And that's programming for students with intellectual and related developmental disabilities located at the Lowell Elementary School. Typically, it's at the Conif, but because we are at Conif West didn't have the space, we moved temporarily that program to the Lowell. Eight students, two teachers there, and four instructional assistants. We also have programming at the Watertown Middle School and the Watertown High School. And just so you're aware, these numbers are just the numbers of students that are in person. We're also supporting some students free to these programs whose parents decided to have them stay remote. But these are the folks that are like in person in the buildings receiving services. Good for the next slide? And then our other specialized program that's prioritized is our Integrated Support Program. And that is for students with emotional and related disabilities. Feature of this group, it's very common to have significant school refusal. And so the longer that we are out, we are away from school, the more comfortable students can get not, not coming to school. So it was really important to bring this group back. And that just gives you the numbers that we're supporting. Again, the program is housed at the elementary level at the Lowell. And we have programming at the Watertown Middle and the Watertown High School. And then we have our LEAP program, which is our adult, adult services program, helping students who have completed their four years of high school but have not earned their high school diploma because they have usually been unable to pass that MCAS test. And they continue to be eligible for special education services. We have, we're serving currently five students in person with one teacher and two instructional assistants. And our Early Steps integrated classrooms, as DeeDee had referenced earlier, the state made it clear that our youngest learners are prioritized for in-person instruction. We have 60 students who are attending in-person instruction. 34 of them are children that have IEPs and they're in whatever their IEPs dictate. So typically, that's anywhere from three to five days per week. And then as also part of our obligation in serving students with special needs at the early childhood level, we have to provide inclusion services. And so we were able to serve 26 children that don't have IEPs that are coming on alternating days to be kind of the typical, the typically developing peer role models for those children that do have IEPs. And again, that, it's not an option that we do that. We have to do that according to regulations. And to serve that group, we have seven teachers and 12 instructional assistants working in person at the Phillips Building. We are also phasing in other high-need students with IEPs at each of our buildings to the greatest extent feasible. So at this point in time, we have about 50 students with IEPs who are not part of our specialized programs. They have more, fully, they're fully included typically in their general education classroom. And we're able to bring them in to serve them two or more days per week at the elementary level. And at the middle school and high school level, sorry, secondary, it's about 74 students that we, we are phasing in to serve two or more days at those levels. Oh, I left off something on this slide. It should have said secondary, not middle school level there. That's combined middle and high school. And we also are providing some related services in person. So all of these different types of therapies and services can be provided in person. Again, depends on the service provider, the students, and how their needs are met. So these are being sometimes provided remotely, but we also are available, have availability to provide these in person. English as a second language, again, the state has, has said that this is a high-needs group. And so this slide just tells how many students we are serving at each of our buildings, from the Conif to the, to the high school, and how many teachers are supporting those children in person in our buildings. Again, registration, we had a large number of students that registered over the summer and in the early fall. That this, at this point in time, that number is beginning to slow down. So the elementary and middle school students are in person twice a week on their extension days. At the high school, they're in person four days a week, Monday through Thursday. We have outstanding family liaisons that are, have been working tirelessly, really since March, and continuing to work on ensuring that families are connected to the internet in the school and helping families get the food assistance or anything else that they, they may be needing. And that's been a tremendous support, you know, for the, for the school and for the families. And at this point in time, we're transporting some of these high-needs students by bus. We are able to continue that right up until our hybrid begins at any level. We are funding the buses to have them at the ready. And so this way, we're using those buses that we're, that we're paying for and able to assist students to get to their in-person services as needed. So next steps, obviously, we're moving towards our hybrid environment and Bridge to Return. We are continuing to increase the number of students with IEPs we're able to serve in person. So we're hearing individually from families that, that weren't identified as kind of those high-needs students from the school side. But the families are communicating with us difficulties that they have that we weren't aware of. And our principals and our special education teams at each building are really creatively figuring out how we can bring more students in to, just to maximize their experience. And then we also are considering requests from families of children that don't have IEPs. So I've heard from many parents of children who have 504 plans in terms of there being a real struggle with, with the remote learning. Also, families that just had limited internet, families who have challenges of overseeing their children when caregivers are working. And again, that's, that's students that maybe don't have any identified disabilities, but they have had challenges with remote learning. So we're taking all those things into account as we're trying to, to safely, you know, bring students back to in-person instruction.
So at this point, we're happy to answer any questions or thoughts that you might have. You know, the point obviously is to provide you just a snapshot of where we're at and then to gather your input and feedback as we continue to, as I said before, reassess where we're at and what we need to do moving forward. Dr. McGinnis did send out the Fall 2020 Teaching and Learning Newsletter, which inside of it has great information around our weekly learning plans and pretty much what we're doing within our schools. Our principals are really good at communicating weekly with their families. And if needed, if you want to go a little bit further, we also have our sample schedules when we move into hybrid as well. But for now, I think we should just open it up to you all for questions and feedback.
Okay. I just, you know, thank you for the presentation and providing this information. It's helpful to, to get us. It's helpful to get a sense of where things are at. And, you know, a special thank you for all the teachers that are in the buildings now, working with the students in these populations that have strong, have special needs. You know, we appreciate very much their willingness to do that. Let me open it up to the school committee and for questions and comments, Lindsay.
Thanks. So my question was, you know, I, I thank you, everybody, for the presentation and for all the comments that we've heard so far. One of my questions was, you know, in the slides, we talked about how, you know, there's not a lot of consensus that sort of this, the one map and the color coded map. You know, I think Department of Education has done a good job making it seem like that is the number that we need to focus on. But I think it's clear that Watertown is interested in more than just that one number. I'm curious to share with other people in the public and, you know, with the committee, what are the other numbers we're looking at? Like what kinds of things is the school system considering and other particular metrics that are consequential in terms of the decision-making when thinking about how to move in and out of phases? You know, I'm a big fan of flexibility and that means in both directions. And so I'm just kind of curious, what numbers are we looking at?
So, you know, I think that obviously trends over time is really important. So one of the things that, when we move into hybrid, for example, you know, the thought is looking at if we were to move into yellow, for example, is it a, is it a one, we've seen this in many communities, it's a one week and then you're back out. Like do you pause everything because you moved into yellow? Or do you dig a little bit deeper and find out who's represented in that yellow move? Is it, you know, an outbreak in a nursing home, for example, or is it students? You know, I think that that would be really important to obviously consider what is causing a rise in the number of cases. The positivity rate is really important as well. One of the things that obviously is happening right now is, you know, we are testing a lot of people. And a lot of it has to do with the colleges coming back. And you're seeing, you know, more surveillance testing even here in Watertown, what we're doing, which really shows a lower positivity rate, which is something that's great. But you have to dig a little bit deeper and make sure that you're accurately representing, you know, are you testing symptomatic people? And what is, what are you getting back when you test your symptomatic folks? You know, I think the school building readiness is obviously another big thing for moving into hybrid. You know, I think we're doing pretty well. We still have a few steps to overcome in terms of, you know, making sure that we have all of our air purifiers and et cetera. And teacher readiness, you know, I think that one thing, I think, I'm not here to speak for teachers, that's for sure, I want to make sure that that's clear. But I know they're going to be ready on the 27th. We've been geared up and, you know, locked and ready to go on the 27th. And, you know, I think that readiness, you know, if we were to move that up or if we were even move it back, I think that you get set as to when you, as a teacher, as an individual are ready to go. And I think that that's really important to consider as well. Like I said before, and I've always said, our teachers are, they will be ready no matter what when we move into hybrid. And, you know, I mean, I think that's, so an answer to your question, Lindsay, it's not just whether we're green, it's looking at, you know, a lot of various factors as well. And certainly looking around the communities, as I said earlier, you know, we are not an island. You know, we're a very small community that, you know, we have a lot of movement back and forth amongst our communities. But something, some, something to think about as well is our larger surrounding communities and what, where they're trending. If we remain green and everyone else is still yellow, then that still says something that, you know, potentially we're doing really well in Watertown, so it might be time to reassess.
Thank you.
Lily?
I was actually going to ask almost the exact same question. I would like to piggyback a little bit on it and just say that while I hear that we're going to look at more than just the map, I am concerned for transparency reasons that we are not studying specific metrics. I would really like us to, you know, choose metrics that we are going to be monitoring and assessing and be open with both the public and the committee about what those metrics are going to be. I think that's in the best interest for teachers. I think it's in the best interest for parents. I think there's a large desire on people's parts to know how we are making the decisions that we're making. And so while I hear that, yes, we're not just going to use the maps, it sounds like there's a lot of moving pieces. I think it would be very helpful if the administration could make the choice for what metrics we are specifically using. And then that would allow for transparency for both public and, you know, the teacher and the staff members of our schools to know how we are making the choice to go hybrid, you know, or as things shift to close. You know, I know that, you know, in my teaching district in Cambridge, we are utilizing three specific metrics. There's a dashboard, you know, website that they are updating daily that is monitoring those metrics, so everything is out in public. You know, and the whole entire community can kind of assess that. I would like to see us build in a little bit more transparency about what we are doing and why we are doing it for everybody's sake. Because I think there's a lot of, as you've said, DeeDee, there's a lot of fear and there's a lot of concern on everybody's part. And I don't think there's a right or wrong answer here. And I think that that's really important is that, you know, there's no wrong, there's no, no one's wrong in wanting to go hybrid. No one's wrong in wanting to stay remote. People have a lot of complicated factors that go into that decision. But the more that we can be transparent about our decision-making and how that's going, I think that will bring a lot of resolution and peace to the community.
So just a quick response. So one of the things that I presented at the last school committee meeting is that we would begin assessing this week and looking for, basically, I had outlined that, that, you know, three weeks of green in the Watertown community, looking at the larger Middlesex County in terms of where we're at over the course of three weeks and the positivity rate being less, I think I put 3% over the course of three weeks. So that was something that I articulated to the school committee back on September 14th. I would consider this to be week one as we head into, you know, getting ready to make the decision to move into hybrid. So I will be posting those out for the public. But that is something that, you know, like I said, we, I can pull that up again. I'll make sure that people have that, but that was articulated, that that was the direction that we were going to look in. And I would say, and I'm going to say it again, though, is if we, you know, head into yellow for one week, then you got to hold and see what happens the next week because you can't just say that we flipped into yellow and that's it. So there is some variability, but certainly if we continue like we are right now for the next three weeks, then I think we're ready to, we're ready to move.
I would just like to do a follow-up, which is that, you know, Conif West is in the yellow. So is that being addressed and how is that being looked at? Because Conif West is in Waltham, which is a yellow community at this time. Is that being assessed differently or is that the same? Or how are we addressing the fact that that is in a different community with a different risk level?
So fortunately, at Conif West, we are, you know, our population is, they're Watertown students, they're Watertown residents, they are, the teachers are the same that would have been teaching in Watertown or in Waltham. Waltham, I believe, actually has their KM1 students in. So, you know, even, I think, I would like to assess Conif West as a Watertown school. I mean, we're as close as it gets and we're not, it's not, half of the kids are coming from Waltham, the other half are Watertown, it's a fully Watertown group of students. So I do, I understand fully and completely that Waltham is yellow. But I think, once again, what we have in our school is what we would have had if we were five blocks over on Warren Street.
Okay, any other school committee folks?
Kendra, Kendra has her hand waving.
I was looking at the electronic hand.
It's okay, John, you're ignoring me, that's all right.
Go ahead, Kendra, sorry.
Thanks, thanks for the presentation. I just, I had a couple of things to add to the conversation and just a couple of things to repeat about things that had already been said. One is, I think Watertown's really done an admirable job preparing for this really challenging year. And it is a very challenging year for everyone. Superintendent led a very comprehensive task force, very thoughtful phased-in approach to hybrid learning. The teams really prepared the buildings, the full HVAC review above and beyond with the purchase of the air purifiers, which really was not part of the review. They've purchased PPE for teachers, staff and students that are providing childcare. And last week, as the superintendent mentioned, starting the voluntary COVID testing for staff. So I'm really proud of the work the district's done, listening to our staff and listening to the science as we enter this really pretty extraordinary year for everyone. Our stated goal, though, and when we first talked about this, is we need to get students back to school as soon as possible. That is our goal. And we've talked about how remote learning doesn't work for the majority of students. That's why 82% of parents said hybrid learning was their choice. Lindsay mentioned at the August 6th meeting in this Dix with me that flexibility is the name of the game. And I really think that is true. We showed a lot of flexibility when we built out this phased-in approach. And I think we need to continue to show flexibility as we adjust to the facts in front of us. Over the last five weeks, our metrics have remained low, all the ones that the superintendent laid out in the last meeting, and you did lay them out in the last meeting. The buildings are ready, testing's in place, childcare has been provided, PPE has been purchased. Again, we have a stated goal, we want to get students back as soon as possible. So I would like us to show a little flexibility and make some very slight adjustments to the dates, not the phased-in approach, because I think it's very smart, but some of the dates that we've laid out. One of those adjustments would be moving middle school to hybrid the week of November 2nd, rather than four weeks after that. I have heard no argument for why middle school should wait so long to go back. And they have a very similar cohort schedule to the elementary schools. The second one, and I know this one is more difficult because it's more timely, is pre-K, K and first graders. I would like to see them moved back as early as possible. Remote learning is especially hard for this age group and getting them back in the classroom, I think, should remain a priority. So again, the phased-in approach is a good model and I like it, I stand by it. And I like how we prioritized our students. But I do think our runway to the hybrid is unnecessarily long and I hope we can consider making some adjustments.
Kendra, Amy?
Hi, everyone. I might have to go to mute because I have a child in tears over homework right now. Yeah, I'm going to go to mute. Someone else want to speak right before me?
Anybody else want to have a comment? Yeah, David.
So in particular, Dr. Goldson, we're, some people have brought up the social, emotional wellbeing and mental health issues that are around being remote. And I, I just want to be cognizant, even in a hybrid mode, you're still doing Zoom, or at least part of the time. So can you talk a little bit more about the things that we're doing as a district to be cognizant of that and kind of the advisory pieces and so forth?
Yep, and I'm not going to put the principals on the spot, but if they would like to add, that would be fabulous. You know, I think, you know, building backwards from the high school, what you just mentioned is, you know, we are meeting with students in advisory. We have office hours for our students, which are not formal time, well, advisory is formal, but the office hours are not formal where, you know, students can come in and get help if they need help. You know, during advisory, it's a chance to, you know, meet every week with your advisory group, which has nothing, it's not academically based, it's really about, you know, taking care of our students socially and emotionally. Our guidance counselors, our social workers, our adjustment counselors are, you know, I think they're working 24/7 and all of a sudden, you know, outreach and also students reaching out to them. Middle school, we are, you know, we have, we have a cluster time where students are broken out of their academics and put back into their clusters. Just again, to work through that, and they have morning meeting every morning before they start. And morning meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Donna, I believe is just, sorry, I'm kind of, I'm not being as linear as I'd like to be, but in elementary and I believe at middle school, the morning meeting is all students come together. So it's not just the students who are in that cohort that come every morning to get us started and kind of check in and make sure that everybody's on, you know, is ready to go and if they have any questions and just making sure they're all right when all is said and done. And then at the elementary, we also have a closing circle, which is everybody comes back together, all the kids, to check in and see how they're doing, even if they were not in the cohort that was in the academics that day. So like I said, and if we find that there's a student who's struggling or if a parent reaches out because their kid is really not, you know, able to access, they're not, they're melting down, they're, whatever it might be, then luckily and fortunately in Watertown, we are blessed with a very deep layer of social, emotional support. And I know that we're accessing it and our goal is to really help our kids along the way. But social, emotional, learning, morning meetings, closing circles, advisory, it's all part of the program, which is, you know, I think there to help the kids. Anybody wanted to add anything in there that I might have missed?
I was just going to say, yes, our community meeting is every morning for 20 minutes. But there's actually like a curriculum that the teachers are given every Sunday night to work. So it's not just a check-in casual, it is a get-to-know-you, but there is something a little bit more formal too. Lessons for teachers to work through with their advisory groups.
More on the social, emotional side?
Yeah, totally social, emotional, yeah.
All right, thank you. Amy, you want to?
Yeah, okay. Hi, everyone, again. So I just want to thank everybody. This, honestly, this has been the most difficult few months for everybody. I've been on the teacher end of this and now I'm on the school committee side of this and I'm on the parent's side with four kids home schooling. There is no right decision, as I think Lily had made point of, that people have some, you know, their choices are different than other people's choices. But before I get into my main reasons of this, I do want to thank the custodial crew in Watertown that has been led by Lori Cabello because they have done a remarkable job in preparing our schools and our buildings for a safe arrival for our students, when and if that happens. I know we are waiting on some safe measures that need to be put in place, such as the air purifiers and the air filters. And those are important things that need to be put in place before we open schools, absolutely. As you may have heard on the September 9th meeting, I think we had, we had a full review of our HVAC systems that were on site. And they have been maintained to very high standards, considering their ages. So as a district, we have definitely invested in the last, I don't know now, since we started these task forces, a great amount of time, let's just put it that way, energy and financial resources to begin this in-person instruction. Kendra had mentioned many of the things that we have done. In this school year, it still could further find disruption and require new adaptations. But I'm confident, and I know everybody else is on this team, that we are going to make decisions that are educationally sound in the best interest for our community, the health, the safety and for the overall mission of the Watertown Public Schools. I support the phased-in approach that we had voted for back in August. Again, that was a while ago. I do believe that the word flexibility comes to mind for me over and over again when we talk about this phased-in plan. We owe it to our students to stay the course of this flexibility plan. And DeeDee, I remember you might have put this in one of your things, but it sticks with me all the time. What's ground us in this work is the collective belief in public education and the dedication to our Watertown children. And I think we need to stay the course on this. And I do support revisiting and accelerated or an adjusted school opening dates for some of these ages because I do believe our students need to be in school. And I feel strongly about that this evening. So, and I appreciate and I respect everybody's concerns and wellbeing in life. That is not what I'm trying to say. It's very difficult for us on this board, in this committee, and I'm not sure I'll ever run again because of this pandemic that we've had to be in. But we're not trying to keep people safe, or unsafe, rather. It's just very difficult. So I commend everybody that's been making these decisions. And I just want to leave it with that because now here comes my child with her Chromebook. So I got to check out. Thank you.
Amy, Lily, you had another comment?
Yeah, so I just, I really do want to piggyback on what Amy said. I'm sorry, my internet is a little laggy right now. I think the most important thing that I just want to speak to the fact of, as being a teacher, we know how hard this is. We know that this is painful, we're feeling it too. We know that we're losing students, we're missing students. Students aren't getting necessarily everything that they need. And I don't think anybody on this call, parent, you know, teacher, administrator, school committee member, is trying to dismiss that reality. It is a reality. And I think it's something that is hitting all of us incredibly hard in different ways. I have a first grader, I have struggled with that. His incredible teachers are actually on the call tonight. And they have been incredible and flexible and amazing. And it's still not perfect. And I am a teacher and I can't figure it all out perfectly. So I don't want to dismiss the reality of the fact that this is not working for some people. And I want to say that there is not one teacher that I know of that doesn't desperately want to be back with their students. Nobody is, I think, on, nobody should be against each other here. I think we're all on team, doing what's best for kids. And we're trying to figure out the best way to do that. I am incredibly proud of what Watertown has come up with. I think we're on the right track. I am incredibly proud of what Watertown has come up with. I think we're on the right track. I think that we have the most dedicated teaching staff that I have seen. I think that we're doing our best. I think, you know, the school committee is doing its best, the administration's doing its best. The teachers need time to transition, and I can't state this enough. The flip between going from virtual to hybrid is not an easy one. It is not something that can be done on the snap. It's something that takes planning, it takes time, it takes preparation. And so while I really honor the fact that parents want us to move the timeline, I hear that and I honor it, and I understand why, and I'm not even slightly dismissive of those concerns. I also want to honor the fact that doing that is not something that happens on a dime. And I do believe that we are in the process right now of trying to get ready for that October 27th date to bring students back into school. I completely understand the idea of relooking at some of the metrics, you know, for middle and high, especially on the October 19th date. But I do think that doing anything for the elementaries at this point does not make a lot of sense in terms of what is best for teaching and learning for our students.
Thank you, Lilly. Mark?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's been involved in, from the administration on down to getting this, getting us going. We've had a lot of comments tonight from parents, a lot of comments from some teachers. We're still waiting for some things to be put in place in some of the buildings. But I do agree that the flexibility is something that we should be continuing to discuss. I do think that we do have to wait, at least until our meeting two weeks from now, because we have plans in place, and I would suggest that, you know, we're not only trying to provide the best education we can in a terrible environment. We didn't wish this pandemic on anyone, and it's going to be a challenge for a little while longer, I hope. But I do think that we need to protect the children, we need to protect the teachers who are teaching these children, because if some of them get sick and we don't have anyone to teach the teachers, then we have other problems. But I do think at our next meeting, we should focus on trying to take another deeper dive into the numbers and what we're looking at, and see where that leads us to maybe be more flexible in moving some of the openings sooner rather than later. So I think I would respectfully request that we talk more about the data at our next meeting, that we're looking at and examining the reopenings, so that we can have a better sense as a committee of, you know, maybe adjusting the schedule potentially. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. And I think in our next meeting, we certainly will do that. We will have another update on the reopening, and we will drill down as best we can looking at the data and the different components there. I just, Lindsay, you want to comment? Wrap it up.
Yeah, no, it was just one more request, because Mark's kind of saying, like, in terms of wanting to talk about data, made me think of it. The other thing I would like to request that we think about is, you know, one of the high need categories, similar to Kendra's point earlier, that the department had put out, is our youngest kids. And that includes our preschool, our kindergarten, our first graders, who are really new readers. And, you know, I think that stress and that difficulty of successful remote learning is especially hard with them, you know. And so, you know, in these phased plans, and even the idea of getting into hybrid, and then possibly that idea of coming out of hybrid, if in battery mode, if things get bad, you know, I really would like us to consider, you know, what does that look like if we're also prioritizing our youngest students to be in the building, you know, more frequently, even in remote settings? You know, I think that that's, even early on, is proving an especially difficult group to teach remotely. And so I just kind of think that we need to be thinking about those students in that priority list when we're trying to keep kids in school and get kids into school.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. I would make just a couple of quick comments. A lot has been said, and I agree with the general direction that people have spoken. I do think we all share the same goal, which I think is to bring students back into school buildings as soon as possible. And the question is how we go about doing that and when we do that. And I do think when we approved this plan in August, I think there was an understanding that, given the dynamic of the pandemic and the changing nature of it, that flexibility was always kind of an assumed part of it. And I think we all share that as well. And I think as there are, if there are opportunities to move up in the plan, to accelerate, to bring some students into the building sooner than what we have noted in the plan, I think we have to take advantage of those opportunities. I want to recognize too, though, that, you know, the COVID metrics, that we talk about the COVID metrics, which is certainly very, you know, a critical piece to it. And we need to drill down and make sure we understand what those metrics are. And I think as the superintendent said, we're not simply map-driven here by the color, green or, you know, yellow, whatever. That's a component to it. I think we look at other metrics as well, and I think superintendent is. We also have to look at the buildings to make sure the buildings are, have the air purifiers and the other components that we're adding to them to make sure that they're safe. And we also have that kind of, the program readiness, I think is very important as well. And, I mean, I think teachers have had, some educators have had opportunities to look at and think about what this hybrid's going to look like. And I think there's still probably more work that can be done on that, I suppose. But I will say a comment there that I think you, you're never going to get it perfect, and then you launch. You will launch, and you will run into problems, and you will face challenges, and you will learn as you go. That is certainly my experience with things of this nature. And so I don't think we can ever be perfect, but I think we want to have a good plan in place, a curriculum plan, or a readiness plan, of how we're going to do that. And then we need to have a good support structure to make sure that that can happen. So again, you know, I think we do need to be flexible. And I know the, I think the superintendent's thinking about that as well. And we'll be looking at over the next couple of weeks, at kind of what the readiness is, what the metrics are, et cetera. Okay, again, we had a long discussion on that, but I think a very good one. So I thank everybody for their comments, and again, thanks to the administration and all the educators that are doing all the work in getting us to this point, and with more work to go, for sure. Okay, let me move on to the next agenda item. And we have a couple of action items. The first is from the policy subcommittee. We have two policies that were, had a first reading at our previous meeting. Our practice as a committee is that when we add policies to our policy book, our policy manual, we have two readings. We did that already. This is the second reading in which we would do a, we would take a vote. So Lilly, you're the chair of the policy subcommittee. Do you want to comment on these, or have the superintendent comment?
I will let the superintendent comment.
Do you want to talk to you briefly?
So the first policy on the agenda is really a list of adjustments to existing school committee policy in light of COVID-19. And in essence, it's all about having, if we talk about flexibility, it's being able to be flexible and responsive, sometimes with school committee approval and sometimes without, in cases where, you know, decisions have to be made, you know, quickly. And so this policy actually was promulgated from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees as a sample policy for districts to use. We've gone through it in the policy subcommittee, and there are some sections that we didn't feel pertained so much to Watertown. But what we have here, it certainly does. It speaks about, you know, school calendar and time on learning and attendance, grading and retention, discipline and suspension, you know, basically in essence that we need to make sure we're still providing education if somebody's disciplined. You know, if there's people with high needs that can't wear masks, you know, we can make exceptions. So really, it speaks a lot to, you know, what happens in the time of COVID. You know, job descriptions, certainly we have teachers that are being very flexible right now in terms of what they're doing and the conditions of where they're working. Privacy of students, so in our addendum, you know, we put information about protecting the privacy of students when we're in a world where, for example, in Zoom, where it's pretty open. But it does allow us just to make sure that, you know, if we need to implement privacy measures, such as we did with Zoom, I can go ahead and do that. pivoting back to remote learning or back to in-school instruction, you know, it's making sure that in our plan, that we are prepared to be able to pivot in either direction. Eligibility for extracurricular activities, so again, we talked about the fact that, you know, we had to change our athletic season. So in essence, it's soup to nuts, what might need to be made along the way, you know, as we go through COVID-19, that might be different than existing policy, or at least subtle nuances and variations based on the circumstances we find ourselves in now.
And it was the recommendation of the subcommittee to approve this policy.
Okay, thank you. And this one is a little bit unusual in that it's a temporary or interim policy. I'm trying to find the exact language, but I think somewhere it says that this policy is only in effect as long as there's an emergency, is that correct?
We changed it to the school year.
Well, they changed it to the school year?
We did.
We did, okay.
So the policy subcommittee's recommendation was that this policy would only in place for the 2020-21 school year.
Okay, all right, thanks for that clarification.
Things were to change, we'd have to redo it next year, but we're very optimistic. It's the only year for this year.
Hopefully that won't be the case.
That's our hope.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any other questions? See none? Roll call, Amy?
Yes. David Stokes?
Yes.
Lily Reed?
Yes.
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
Max Ediris?
Yes.
John Ports?
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, so that policy passes, is approved. The other policy is a draft, or the immunization of students.
Yep, and I think that really, for the most part, we did pick up the fact that we had left out Guardian in our original, remember, we went through with Guardian and everything, but somehow it didn't make it into immunization. So really, this is not a new policy for us. But I think the point was also to, as we have down here, the note from MASC, is to highlight the fact that this year, you know, students will have to have flu shots, immunizations, influenza immunizations, because of the fact that, you know, flu and COVID are very similar in terms of how they represent. So let's at least, you know, we have a vaccine for the flu, so let's make sure that we're working and making sure our students are vaccinated for that, so that we are not jumping to conclusions that it's always just a flu. So that's the reason for highlighting that, but also adding Guardian.
Well, and it's a state requirement?
Yes.
For the students.
Right, and the policy says that, that, you know, the Department of Public Health will be, they specify what immunizations you need, and now the flu for this year is one of them.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any other questions, discussion?
Just a reminder that that flu shot is mandated by December 31st.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, both. Amy?
Lily Reed?
Yes.
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
Max Ediris? David Stokes?
Yes.
John Ports?
Yes, Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have school committee meeting minutes from September 14th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Second. Any questions? Okay, roll call? Lily? Why don't you keep going?
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
Max Ediris?
Yes.
David Stokes? John Ports?
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, so that minutes are approved. We go to reports. The first report is from the superintendent on the Watertown Public Schools website. Dr. Golson?
Excellent. So that was actually a request from the school committee, just, I believe, and I'll be more than happy to answer questions, just thinking about the status of our website. I fully and completely would say that, due to the fact that we've been, obviously, a little preoccupied by many other things, I think there are links on our website that are cleaned up. So, you know, I would say that, I just put up here for everyone to see. We have, in terms of how we take care of our website, we have five content curators, one for each of the buildings. We have one district-level curator, and then we have one website social media manager. So that's sort of how we manage our sites. I think that one thing that we determined is that, and we rectified this, that the posting really indicated that it was like a 10-month position. So I think the summer got a little lost. So we have made it very clear that this is a 12-month position for these people. So we just did the posting. We are appointing our new content curators, I think, tomorrow. So we will be moving forward, and the first job will be to make sure that they go through and check all the links and make sure there's nothing that's not active or outdated, and make sure what we do have there is important and pertinent for families in terms of finding information. I did put over here on the left-hand side, this is kind of how, this is just like a checklist that we give to our content curators. They're supposed to put a new news article, you know, weekly posts to the announcement pages. And they do actually work with Facebook and Twitter as well. They're supposed to post the principal's newsletters, update the calendars, ensure the students whose pictures are not, you know, can't be posted or not published, you know, close teacher websites, general website auditing for out-of-date or stale content, and then social media. So it's kind of like the basic functions of these. And then the last thing I wanted to point out is, in terms of recommendations, these are just my own self-recommendations. I think it would be good to, if you remember, three years ago, we had a communications team. And not to have a standing like, let's meet every month, but maybe we could call some of the communications team back just to go through the website. That's part of the reason why we ended up with our new website, and just say, hey, this is working well, or this is really not working. Because, you know, as content curators or people in the weeds, you know, we might not see the bigger picture that people are looking for. So I think that would be good. And I know we've had a conversation around my goals, around hiring a communication strategist, and I think that would be helpful as well, because that would take the responsibility of overseeing that large, you know, the group of seven that we have, and making sure that we're very current and putting the right things out there for parents and families. So I do know that there's some work to be done, and we are certainly committed to doing that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Golson. Questions or comments?
So, Dr. Golson, I had an opportunity this week to talk to a community member who is not a school parent. And she was like, oh, I know nothing about the high school project. So I went through and pulled together all the information that I had, and the building for the future portion of the site is dismal. It really is way behind, and I'm saying this also in front of the school building committee chairman. So I wasn't sure if that portion of the website is being content-driven through a content curator in the public schools, or if that's part of the school building committee's owner's project manager. So that was the question.
It's more the building committee is taking responsibility for that. And there's, there is a, there's kind of a component, looking at the high school and then the elementary, and they're kind of on slightly different paths in terms of kind of getting, upgrading the quality and all. But I know Mark could speak to that more if he wants to.
Kristi Murphy, the project man of the project management team, has been working to get it updated. And I haven't checked it, so I'm surprised to hear what you're saying, because we started off pretty well. I will check with her first thing in the morning and see if we could get it more robust, you know, opportunity for people to see what's going on.
I did have another question that's completely unrelated, John. Okay, go ahead, mind. The other question, Dr. Golson, is who do we let know when we see problems with the website?
Yes.
Or do we want updates?
So as soon as, so the easiest answer is Christine Carletti, who is Dr. McGinnis's administrative assistant. She's actually the district-level content curator. So she'd be the first person to email, or you could actually Ariel's on the call as well. My admin assistant, she can also interface with the website if we needed to get something quick. And then as soon as we appoint those content curators, we can post that on the website, so that you would know, building-wise, you know, I mean, you can always let the principal know too. But certainly, I think Christine is the fastest way to get something changed.
Lindsay?
Um, my question, or mine, wasn't really more of a suggestion, you know, I think that a lot of the, what we know and what we don't know about what's needed on the website really comes from like the parents and community that interact with it. And so I'm wondering if, you know, we should regularly ask our site councils and PTOs, like, hey, what do you think about the website? Have you noticed? Like, I think that's just a, could be a standing five-minute conversation in Like, I think that's just a, could be a standing five-minute conversation in those forms where parents are sort of actively engaged in looking at the website regularly, and I think it'd be a good habit for us to just check in with those high-traffic users on the website and see also how that's going.
Good point. Good point. Any other comments? Let's see, Lilly?
Yeah, I guess my question is, who's managing the curators? So who is going to be overseeing the curators to kind of manage all of that? And then, do we have like a feedback loop? Are we figuring out how things are working? And, and, you know, what's the kind of strategy behind how we're going to operate the website as a whole?
So actually, our, the coordinator of instructional technology, Rashmi Prithkar, is the one that oversees the curators. They, you know, are supposed to meet monthly, but I think we got stopped up a little bit starting in March in terms of meeting monthly with the curators. So she, she is the one that is really kind of working with them to keep things updated. And I would have to say that I lost your second part of your question. Could you just ask me again, because I had an answer for that, but I forgot what it was?
Yeah, I was talking about like a feedback loop, so how to figure out like how it was going, who was going to indicate that, and also like the consistency between the different schools and the different sites, like who was going to be kind of monitoring that and giving us the feedback to know if we needed to update.
Yep. So one thing, what we did when we first launched the website, which I think is time to do again, is we actually had a form that was a quick, like, three questions. It wasn't even questions. It was like, do you see something that needs to be changed? Is there something you couldn't find? And we got a lot of great feedback those first couple of months about like what was missing and what, you know, and I think it's time to do that again. But, you know, I think that once we appoint the curators, we'll have a meeting pretty straightforward and talk about kind of those expectations, and they work well together. So hopefully, you know, the goal is that, yes, there'll be consistency in terms of navigation. So I'm, I'm, I think the monthly meetings with the content curators is really going to help that.
Okay. I mean, can I just also suggest that we do have meetings with the users, because parents are heavily utilizing this website during remote learning. So not only should we be talking to the people who are making the website, but the people who are accessing and using the website, because I, I will say honestly, it can be somewhat unwieldy to use sometimes, and I think that curators might be a lot more tech-heavy than the average parent.
And that, the communication, that's why I went to the communications team, because that was majority parents. It was actually not teachers. So I'm going to reach out to them. I mean, there were a lot of people on that team that, you know, really gave us a lot of great feedback, so they, to me, that would be a perfect group to tap into right away. But I love the idea of whoever made it, about asking the PTOs and the site councils for feedback as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Golston. Next up would be, again, for you, the optional COVID-19 testing for staff, which you mentioned a little bit earlier, but that just got started recently.
Yep. Let me just, sorry, I'm going to go to the actual memo. I'm not going to read the memo. I just want to say that Watertown has committed to offering COVID-19 testing for our staff members, voluntary, weekly, using PCR testing, and this is done through grant funding. And, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of discussion, you know, statewide, policy-wide, as to whether this should be something that we should have been doing, but I think from the, from the onset of discussing reentry plans, it seemed to make sense that we would do testing. And so I think that with some dogged determination, you know, and a group of people, including Heidi Perkins and Kathy Damaris and our, two of our school nurses, we just kept trying to find avenues and ways to do this. We got very lucky in terms of partnering with the Rhode Institute as well as CIC Health to bring the testing to Watertown. Took a little longer than anticipated in terms of, you know, executing a contract with a company, a health company that had probably never really gone through Massachusetts, you know, financial law. And so we finally got there, and we did our first testing last week. We did, we do drive-up testing. We never had a line. We processed seven, no, 90 people the first day and 50 people the second day, and our results were back within 14 hours. So, you know, I think the point of this is, you know, ideally, knock on wood, we never have a positive result, but if we do, it's quick. It's, it'll enable us to, you know, mobilize pretty much the next day in terms of having to either quarantine people or do contact tracing and really just shut it down as quickly as possible. And so I think, to me, this is, this is essential, and I'm just really pleased that we're doing it. One thing that I put at the very end of this is that I would love to be able to continue, you know, come mid-winter, you know, moving on, as tests become easier, more readily available to even think about voluntary testing for older students. I'm thinking, you know, secondary students, who I think that would just be a great layer to add on, and I think that that could be something we could do moving forward in the future. Just again, I want to thank, not only, I mentioned Kathy and Heidi, because they worked very hard to get this going, but Michelle Larissy and Bianca Jones, who are our two nurses, were just fantastic, and George Berry, who is our food service driver, who drove the test to Cambridge. So I just want to make sure that we thank everybody that really helped out in this process.
All right, thank you. I think it's great. I think it's, you know, it's, I don't think a lot of districts are doing that. I think it's a good step for us to do that, and, you know, as you say, if we go down the road and it's possible to offer it to students as well, that's a great, that would be a nice addition.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Anybody? Lilly, you have a question here, or is that a resident from before?
That was from before, but thank you for offering this, Dee. I think it's great that we're doing testing for staff.
Okay. All right, thank you. And next would be reports, building for the future. The elementary school projects?
No, no, no. I was just going to put up a picture.
I just, Dee Dee and several others attended today. We had a topping-off ceremony at the Kuntf, and for those who don't know what a topping-off ceremony is, it's the final steel beam for the structure was put in place. It was signed by many people. It's already been on the website. I saw a couple of photos today, and that was pretty exciting to see how quickly, we're actually a week sooner than we were expecting to be on the steel portion. So, I mean, it was a really nice, nice thing to see, and it's getting really exciting over at the Kuntf. I don't know if you want to add to today's?
I would just say that it really does make you believe that this project's going to get done, and that we're going to have an absolutely beautiful building, because now, I mean, even if you look at this that I'm showing on the screen, and you've, if you've been following along, you can see the walls and you can see the school, because it's completely framed. And it's just, it's awesome and inspiring to think that, you know, hopefully, you know, beginning of next year, our students are going to be walking into, you know, the most amazing, one of the only net-zero buildings out there for a school, and here we are, right here in Watertown. So very, very pleased and very proud.
I want to add a couple of things to this. The final decking should be going up in the next couple of weeks, and then there's more concrete to be poured on the floors. Trying to get all that done by November 1st, and then trying to get the building closed in so they can do the inside work end of December. So we're moving, this progress is quick. The rest of the progress won't seem so quick, because you're not going to see what's going on inside. So, and then at the Hosmer, this topping-off ceremony is probably going to be late December, early January, so much bigger, much bigger school, more complicated. They're just getting to foundations and footings at this point, but we're moving right along. We had some neighborhood challenges that we've corrected, and that it seems to be moving very well this week. So we'll get, we'll move along with that one as well.
Great. Thank you. Exciting. High school.
So we have two, two events coming up this week, one of which is the school building committee on October 7th, and then October 8th is the community forum for the high school. So probably the, if I were going to pick an event to go to, I would suggest going to the community forum. That's our opportunity to really provide anyone who's interested in an update as to where we are in terms of site selection, and really getting a deeper look at, you know, where we're at and what, what the possible potential sites might be. And we've certainly narrowed it down. You know, I think my seat might be very temporary right here, but that's okay. But I would suggest to anybody in the community who is interested in knowing where we're at, to attend the October 8th community forum, which is six?
Six o'clock.
Yep, six o'clock. Zoom link is on the Building for the Future website.
It's there.
Yes. Yep.
Can I also add that late tomorrow, I believe late tomorrow, we're going to have the presentation going to be put on the website so people can look at it in advance. And again, we will address the website issues hopefully quickly, but that will be put on the website as well, so people can see what we're, the architect has done an amazing job with some renderings that make it look great, but we still have to have a lot of discussion with the building committee and the community, but this is going to give everybody an opportunity to see what will happen.
Any other questions on the high school? Thank you very much. Budget update?
So I'm going to stand in for Heidi. She wanted to express to the committee that really isn't, there isn't much that's happened in terms of the budget, in terms of any ins and outs, other than we can just continue to move on. You know, we're, we've closed a lot of positions, so we're hiring staff.
She did send us a report.
She did, yep. And the other thing that's noteworthy is on Tuesday the 13th is the initial budget presentation from the town for FY '22. That's the right, it's like, I'm losing track of years, but yes, FY '22. So very, looking forward to that, and we'll start our budget process shortly.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Enrollment?
So we have our first enrollment report. I just wanted to go over a few things, because it looks probably a little different than what you've seen in the past. And I would have it up here. Let me share my screen. Sorry, everybody in the public, hold on one second. So what I wanted to do, I just want to make sure people are kind of clear as to how this is looking, and next time when we do this, I, I will make, I'll put asterisks so that you know which ones are virtual school classrooms and which ones are, will be hybrid. So if you see one, for example, where it says grade one for the Kuntf, where it says Landi, now, she's actually a teacher at the Hosmer, but she's teaching in the virtual school eight of the Kuntf students. So everybody who's on here are Kuntf students, but you'll see teachers on here from other buildings, because they're actually the virtual school teachers, and they're picking up some of the students from the Kuntf or the Lowell. So that's one thing I wanted to make sure that you've noticed, like Garabedian, she's a Lowell teacher, but she shows up on the Kuntf. That's because she is teaching eight of the Kuntf students. And the same thing, sorry, go ahead, John.
Well, but Landi has, also has 11 Hosmer students?
Yes.
As well as the eight Kuntf.
Exactly.
So 19 is the total.
So whenever you see a small little number like that, you can be assured that it's actually, that that person's going to appear like Walsh is at the Lowell with another compliment. And usually, not, not completely, but for the most part, we've kept them in cohorts. So like the Kuntf kids are in a cohort, like A or B, depending upon, you know, that's why the cohorts seem to be pretty evenly spaced and sized. So that's one thing I definitely wanted to point out. The other thing is that, and if you, I'm sure, I know I have people out there that are counting up the numbers, you know, we, we have seen a pretty marked decrease in our enrollment. And I would just say, you know, really, it's, it's at the elementary level. We've actually seen fairly stable, if not actually an increase, in our secondary. I think a lot of what we heard tonight about, you know, obviously, it's harder to be in a remote environment for our elementary students. I think, you know, our homeschooling numbers have doubled, so it's not necessarily going to private school. I'm sure that some families chose to put their children in private school, but a lot of people chose to homeschool their children, and I think that this is reflected in these numbers. One, at the end, though, I do want to make sure that, sorry, I'm going to move my screen up. Sorry, close your eyes, because I get a little nauseous when I do that quickly. So one of the things that I wanted to notice is that our district enrollment is down a lot also because of the fact that we really don't have more than, at this point, 13 pre-K students. Normally, we have about 60, but due to the fact that we weren't able to offer in-person pre-K, a lot of families made other arrangements for our four-year-olds. So that's the tuition-based program. That's important, because that doesn't necessarily count in our total enrollment for the state, but we are dramatically down in our pre-K. But if you were to take that out, our total across the district loss is about 2.6%, you know, about 91 students. And like I said, a lot of those have, are actually homeschooled, but there was a definite decrease in enrollment, and we've seen that across the state. It's not just in Watertown. In fact, I was pretty buoyed by our middle school and high school numbers, because the decrease is negligible. But at the elementary, yes, that we have certainly seen a, a little bit of a drop in our enrollment. I would say that although that's the case, every day, there are new students that are coming in too. So, you know, it's, we will move through this, and, you know, we will be fine in the end, but I did want to make sure that people knew that there was a difference in the enrollment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the enrollment report? Okay, personnel?
Hold on, hold please. Let me just go to the personnel reports.
Mostly coaches.
Yes. Well, we did a lot of appointing of our, of our call. Remember that the season started a little bit later than normal, so normally that takes place over the summer, but we actually were a little late in the hiring of our coaches. And, but other than that, you know, we've done the majority of our hiring. We will be assessing next week in terms of any, I mean, we really have relatively few unfilled positions, but certainly, our major hiring is complete at this point in time.
Okay, any questions on that? Thank you. Next would be the school committee chair. I would just make one comment. I know that, I think it's well generally known that Watertown was identified by the state, by the commissioner and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, along with, you know, what, 15 or 16 other school districts. We received a letter on September 18th from the commissioner, came to myself and to the superintendent, and kind of encouraging us to think about our schedule, our phase-in, arguing that the COVID metrics were relatively low here. And so they sent that letter to a number of other districts as well, and we responded. I put a response together, working with the superintendent and feedback from the school committee, and then we sent that back on September 28th and gave an explanation as to why we are in the path that we are, the bridge to return, which we've already spent quite a bit of time talking about, but the importance of a phased return while also kind of recognizing that, you know, creating, making sure that the buildings are in good condition, making sure that the educational programming is ready, and recognizing also that we started actually much later than most school districts. We started well after, probably a week or so after many other school districts started. Both of those letters just were public information. They're both available on the website, both the superintendent, the commissioner's letter, and then a letter that came from myself and Dr. Golston. That's my report. Superintendent?
Thank you. I would just like to just point out, just because of what you said about the fact that we started a little bit later.
Yep.
You know, we were one of the districts that starts after Labor Day, so, you know, we were granted the 10 days for, which reduced the year by to 170, which is what most districts did, but they started on September 16th. I just want to make sure that people in the, the community realize that, that we're not short on those days. You know, our year will probably be a little bit longer than some of those other districts that started on the 16th. We just spread-loaded that time because of the fact that we thought that was most important for our teachers, to help get ready for the year, and knowing that hopefully by June, we'll be in a great place and really appreciate those days. So it's no different than any other district in terms of time, but we did start later So it's no different than any other district in terms of time, but we did start later than others, which I think did play into, to the letter. So as I always do, I just want to thank everybody for, you know, having, we, the last time we met was before we returned to instruction and I, you know, I know there's bumps in the road, but I, I spoke with a high school student today who talked about the fact that she was actually doing, having a really great experience. So, you know, it's gonna take time to get into those routines. And, you know, we are really, as I said before, committed to in-person instruction as soon as we can. And, and, you know, fingers crossed we will get there. So one thing that I wanted to, to bring up, I said it over and over, and I referred to the instructional leadership teams. So one thing that we've brought into our school community are what we call ILTs, or instructional leadership teams. And right now, every building, with the exception of the high school, and primarily that's because the high school has department chairs or coordinators that really serve at the high school level. But at elementary and middle, we have instructional leadership teams, which at the elementaries are one teacher from each grade level, a special educator, a specialist and an ESL teacher that really meet regularly after school to talk about teaching and learning in the building, any kind of the social emotional learning, really helping to advise the principal in terms of what directions they might want to go in. So it's, it's, it's a great tool to not only build leadership capacity of our teachers, but really to have a consensus-driven approach from the teachers as to the direction that we might be going in within our buildings. Right now, more than ever, the timing was perfect to have ILTs because all the questions and the feedback that we got this evening from our parents and our families, I know that the principals all have meetings with their ILTs this week. So I'm sure that that information and the feedback will be taken back to those teams to have deep conversations about what can we do if we need to do something different. And like I mentioned before, one of the things that they're considering right now is the schedule, the actual daily schedule to make sure that it's meeting the needs of our students. So that is something new in our, our system. The first place was the middle school from the turnaround plan, but like I said, we expanded it to the elementaries and we do feel that this is a, is an important structure for success in our schools. Just wanted to highlight that. I have a community forum tomorrow night. So the, it's at 6:00 PM and the Zoom link is on the website, on the front page. Anybody who would like to join me at the community forum, people are more than welcome to do so via Zoom. And then like I said, school building committee and then our big high school community forum. So busy week.
Any questions for the superintendent? Just a quick one on, on the instructional leadership team. How large at the elementary level typically?
Nine, nine people.
Nine people?
And the principal. Right, guys? And girls? Yes?
That's correct. Nine teachers, the principal and the assistant principal.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Just a quick comment. I, I do think it's, you know, creating that kind of structure with, with teachers, I think is really important. I'm, it goes along with something we started several years ago when we, we started adding more coach capacity with instructional coaches. And I think that it, it, you know, goes directly to supporting the classroom, instruction in the classroom. So I just think that they're important. They go to a good step. Any new business? Seeing none. Announcements, we just heard all the community forum, the building committee, the high school community forum. Next school committee meeting is October 19th at 7:00 PM. And it might be at the, we're not sure yet where it'll be.
Yep, probably at the middle school, but I haven't told anybody yet.
Okay.
So.
Right. So this is one, our second meeting of the month was the one where we were planning to base it, if you will, it'll still be Zoom, but, but base it out of one of the school buildings. So we did several of those last year and then we hit the pandemic, but we'll start that again for our October 19th meeting. So it will be based out of one of the schools and have a little bit of a feature of, of things that are going on at that school will be part of. Public forum? Anybody from the public wish to speak? I don't see anybody. Anyone from the public? Give you a second. Can you add to? Nope.
Oh, here.
There's somebody. Who is that? I can't.
Hold on.
Owen, okay. Owen, you wanna, you wanna add, add another comment?
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, thank, thank you. I just wanted to say I was happy to hear the talk about flexibility. I really wish you wouldn't wait two weeks to go for that flexibility. We could have a meeting sooner. Maybe if not this week, you could have a meeting next Monday. So there's a week and a whole nother week of information. I was gonna talk about my kids' experiences, but I have sent you guys emails and I won't reiterate, but I did want to share what I've shared with a few people, sort of with the event that kind of precipitated me starting the petition. I'm not sure how many of you are aware that the kindergarten screenings were done this year on Zoom. I know from work I've done in the past that those screenings are legally mandated by the state and are the result, were the result of decades of work by disability advocates suing and lobbying and fighting to get screenings so the kids would get the right kind of services they need and not have years go by. Because we all know the sooner kids get services, the better. The screenings were done on Zoom and they were done at the end of the day. From what I saw when I was talking, and I've talked to other parents, I'll let any other parents who, they can tell their own stories, but with my kid, you know, the teacher, and I'm not blaming the teacher at all. I'm not blaming the teacher at all. I don't think they should have been in this position. She couldn't see the grip. They asked her to stand on one foot. They couldn't see her feet or her legs. They asked her to skip. They couldn't see her feet or her legs. They asked her to hop on one leg and they couldn't see her feet or her legs. In my opinion, the screenings have basically not been done. We have not screened the kindergarten kids. I don't understand why they couldn't go in one at a time and do the screenings in person. It would have been perfectly safe, in my opinion, to bring the kids in and do the screenings one at a time. If there's a reason why they were done that way, I'd love to hear it. If not, I would suggest, like I have suggested in my letter, that you get the kindergartners into school as soon as possible and that you do screenings again in school. Thank you for your time. And I do understand that your decisions are very difficult and that you have to strike a balance. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you very much, Owen. Dr. Goldstein, I don't know if you want to speak to that or maybe you could communicate with Owen later, point on that issue?
Yep, that would probably be best.
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay. Any other one from the, the public want to speak in public forum? Thank you, Owen.
There's another hand up.
Oh, yes. Hold on, I'm going to scroll down. That is SC.
Somebody, S, SC, can you identify yourself?
Maybe in the chat, if they can put their name in the chat, that would be the best way to do that. I mean, you have to identify yourself.
Yeah.
Her name is Sylvia.
SC, can you? We can't hear.
Sylvia Cruz. She's just put it in the chat.
Great, there we go. Perfect.
Sorry. Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure how the Zoom stuff works. I actually did have a couple of questions. And maybe this is available online. I've looked everywhere, but are you guys, has, have you guys shared the results of the, in all of the surveys that were sent out earlier this summer when, when you were emailing and asking parents about their comfortableness with, or their preferences around in-person, remote, hybrid, et cetera?
Yeah, they were all shared in, in kind of earlier documents, earlier reports towards the end of the summer. I don't know.
It was July 27th.
July 27th?
Yep.
Okay. And I, I can, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember. Can you tell me, Lily, what was sort of the, especially for the younger kid, younger parents or parents of younger children, like the preference around remote versus going in, in person?
I don't have that data right in front of me, but I remember that, you know, pretty definite, it was about 40-ish, 48, 49, just under 50% were absolutely, I want to go in a in-person environment. But 23, 24% that was not sure yet, probably leaning to in-person. We had 15% that said, no, I'm actually going remote. And then another like 10 that said, probably going remote, not sure yet. So at that point, it was, you know, I mean, it seemed like a, a larger group, the 48% said that they definitely wanted to be in-person. And I don't, if I'm remembering correctly, it was a higher number of elementary folks that actually wanted to be remote. I was actually surprised, thinking that there might be more at the secondary level, but that, that wasn't necessarily the case. But certainly, that information is available in the presentation.
And are you guys planning on sending out another survey to kind of ask, now that we've done it for, you know, a week and a half, two weeks, like where people stand on it? I guess I'm just trying to understand, like when you're meeting next in a couple of weeks to determine, you know, what's factoring into that?
So really, I go, going back to, I mean, I said of in the summer that we would certainly be checking in with our families. I, I did not have the intention to do so this quickly. But I think the, the decision, which I said a little bit earlier, really revolves around, you know, on the 22nd, or really it's gonna be the 19th because of the school community meeting, you know, are we ready to move forward into the hybrid? And as, you know, we look at our, our metrics and we look at our school readiness, it seems that that is something that, you know, hopefully on the 19th that we'll be able to recommend and make that decision at that point in time. I, I don't, I don't hesitate to imagine that most parents that selected to be in the bridge to hybrid want to be in hybrid. I'm not saying that's every parent. I mean, I think there were some parents who might have thought we were gonna go in a different direction and, you know, maybe at this point in time, they might prefer to be in remote if we decide to go to hybrid. But I, I would say the majority of families at this point, since they made the selection to go bridge to hybrid, are looking forward to us moving in that direction as well. So.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly are. I mean, it's been a disaster for us. Our children are crying. They hate school. And so, I mean, we're like seriously contemplating pulling our kids out and like relocating to a different state. And so just, I'm trying to understand, I guess, you know, in trying to like plan for our family, you know, what, I'm, like, I know the person who spoke earlier was saying like, gosh, I wish we could meet before the 19th to talk about it. It's because there's just, it's almost feel like every day that goes by, it's like our children are falling further and further behind. So I'm just, I guess I'm trying to understand if you guys even have an early indication of the likelihood of being able to, to go in person at some point, even before the 19th?
I, I think in the current, I mean, I think we're certainly it's been said, we want to be flexible. We want to look at the, the certain, the circumstances, but I think it's unlikely that we would take any action like that prior to the 19th. I would just put it in those terms. I think that's.
Okay.
Good now.
And, and online, I can, I guess, is it gonna be a pretty straightforward, like do you guys have your criteria and rubric already set up where it's like, you know, under a certain number of cases, you know, or is it, is it very objective or is it more subjective? Like, could I go online and look at the rubric and seeing where this rubric is, get a sense myself? Or is it more gonna be a subjective call?
So, you know, this is, the public forum is really an opportunity for, for you to kind of raise questions. And what might be best there is, so you have an email exchange with the superintendent, because you have a lot of particular questions about that, and that's fine. So I would, I would suggest you send an email to her and she can follow up with some of those questions. But quite a bit of that, you know, again, that report that you wanted, that's online from July 27th and but I think a good follow-up email and you can get some of those.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anybody's welcome to come to the community forum.
Right, community forum is another opportunity, which is also on Zoom. That, that's really designed for those kinds of questions and longer engagement. So encourage you to.
All right, we'll do. Thank you.
I don't see anybody else. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second roll call.
David Stokes. Lily Reed.
Yes.
Kander Foley.
Yes.
Lindsay Moska.
Yes.
Loxitiris. John Ports.
Anybody down here?
Yes.
Thank you very much.